I hear. They thought I was you.
I was like, Ash will have one.
What are you doing?
Maybe you have to divide the checklist into six groups so it's faster, or eight.
Town meeting will please come to order. The legal voters of the town of Middlebury and the county of Addison and the state of Vermont are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Mary Hogan Elementary School Cafeteria Gymnasium, 201 Mary Hogan Drive, on Monday, March 5th, 2018, at 7:00 PM to act on Articles 1 through 6, and on Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, from 7:00 AM through 7:00 PM at the town offices, 77 Main Street in Middlebury, to vote by Australian ballot on Article 7 as provided by the Middlebury Town Charter. Well, welcome to our newest venue. I hope it works for everyone this evening. I'm sure the selectmen would welcome your feedback as you have thoughts about this location for our annual meeting. We want to thank the folks from Mesa for offering refreshments, and they'll be there as long as the food lasts, so feel free to help yourselves as you wish. I think the bar is closed, though. Oh, well, I guess it wasn't open. Let me introduce our selectman, our chairman, Brian Carpenter, Susan Shashak, Nick Artem, Heather Sealy, Laura Assermeley, Farad Khan. Selectman Victor Nuovo is unable to be with us tonight due to health reasons. Article 1 is to act upon the reports of the town officers. And as we get into our business this evening, I'll ask your permission for some non-resident members of the town administration to speak this evening. They are Kathleen Ramsey, our town manager, Chris English, the assistant town manager, Dan Werner, the director of public works planning, Bill Kernan, the director of public works operations, our library director Dana Hart, and fire chief David Shaw. Any objection to those folks speaking during the meeting tonight? Appears to be no objection. What is your pleasure regarding Article 1, which is to act upon the reports of the town officers? Moved to accept the reports of the officers by Laura and seconded by Heather, I think. Let me invite Brian Carpenter, the chairman of the board, to offer some thoughts on the year just passed. Brian?
Thank you, Governor. Good evening, fellow Middlebury townspeople. Our select board values of integrity, leadership, inclusion, and fiscal responsibility are manifest in a diverse board that we find is very open, deliberative, eager for citizen input, and gratefully one that upon a decision being made by the majority comes together in the best interests of the town. We are pleased with wonderful municipal recreation, public safety, and cultural and educational infrastructure here in Middlebury. We are likewise grateful for the many businesses that engage in the public good, supporting community nonprofits, clubs, and programs. And among other things, we have a tremendous town and college relationship that has delivered infrastructure that may not have otherwise come to fruition. We feel like we're moving forward. Besides providing guidance for the business of the town, the select board has been hard at work on planning projects affecting infrastructure and safety. We met following elections, laid out a full list of wants and some needs, and prioritized them for time and financial resources. Our key objectives were improved infrastructure, budgeting for sustainability, support for livability, leadership in sustainable living, and preservation of community character. In 2017, building on efforts of the last few years, the town of Middlebury made significant progress on several of the major priority initiatives and is striving to advance projects to improve the town's infrastructure and sustainability. The long-planned replacement of the nearly 100-year-old Main Street Emergence Row Bridges began with the demolition of the bridges and the installation of temporary bridges during the summer of 2017. Construction activities planned for this year include drainage and other preparatory work on the rail bed, which should minimally affect traffic in the downtown. I recently wrote an editorial in Addison Independent. We've listened diligently to criticism throughout the exercise of our bridge and rail project. The project is better as a result of that input, and I have publicly thanked those citizens who brought actionable ideas forward. We do not, as a select board, seek credit for the ideas, but we feel responsible to ensure the greater good for our community is served. My fear at the time was that constant criticism could become destructive and thwart progress. The town has partnered with the Better Middlebury Partnership and a broad-based community action group called Neighbors Together to mitigate the impact of the bridge replacement project on our local retail, restaurant, and hospitality businesses through a series of events and marketing campaigns to take place through the completion of the project in 2021. At our February 28th Select Board meeting, we approved a $75,000 state grant to help fund these activities. The town also completed several other major infrastructure improvements in 2017. Revitalization of the Frog Hollow parking lot off Mill Street with improved street lighting and new paving, replacement of a large culvert on Helpin Road, and sidewalk and stormwater improvements on North and South Pleasant Street. Additionally, it is anticipated that stormwater improvements in Chipmunk Park off South Street, started in the fall of 2017, will be completed early in the spring of 2018. I'd like to give you a brief status on some other ongoing planning and design efforts we have underway. The Polk Mill Bridge Road Seymour Street Sidewalk that's been in planning for a long time, the conceptual plan is complete and we anticipate construction in 2018. Exchange Street Sidewalk and Shared Use Path. We have conceptual plans for the sidewalk shared use path from Elm Street to Catamount Park that were approved by the board, and we're anticipating construction to begin in 2019. A major East Middlebury flood resiliency project. Engineers are currently completing plans and cost estimates for improvements to protect the Village of East Middlebury from damage from future flood events, and we expect to be bringing a bond vote to you later this year to help fund our share of that project. Erosion of the gravel portion of Creek Road. We're seeking grant funding to stabilize and or relocate portions of Creek Road with the goal of reopening the road if possible. Charles Avenue infrastructure improvements, including stormwater curbing, sidewalk, street lighting, road recycling and paving, and water and sewer main replacements from the stop sign in front of the high school north to Water Street. And for the businesses out on Exchange Street who've had so many issues with water, a major project forces evaluation of the town's water system and planning for water main replacements and/or upgrades in hopes of floating a bond for improvements later this year, targeted in November for 2018. A 20-year engineering evaluation of the physical plant and treatment processes at the town's wastewater treatment facility in anticipation of facility updates in the early 2020s. Planning for passenger rail and the siting of our passenger rail platform. And a town-wide reappraisal, which is currently underway with new real estate values to be effective April 1st of 2019. Also, the select board accepted recommendations from the Economic Health Task Force. The recommendations provide the board with a strong basis for redefining the town's economic and business development program in collaboration with other local, regional, and statewide economic development efforts. Finally, during December and January, the board worked hard to develop a budget for your consideration this evening, which preserves existing municipal services and boosts funding for infrastructure improvements while minimizing the tax impact. I'm very proud of the work our Middlebury staff does each year to manage their departments. We have been impacted by wage and benefit cost increases. However, because of a moderate growth in our tax base, some cost cutting where it was possible, and use of our fund balance, they've assisted us in sustaining our tax rates. At a time when many personal and small business budgets are strained by significant annual increases in healthcare and state education taxes, we will soon be asking you to approve only a modest increase for the fourth year in a row. We will also be asking you to support using a portion of the local option tax funds to apply to a capital project. Following a two-year review of growth in the funds and an anticipated needs for cross-street bridge maintenance comparison, our educated belief that we presently maintain a considerable surplus in that fund, and so the select board feels this is an appropriate use for the local option tax proceeds. While we have many infrastructure projects well underway, they remain challenges for the future of our community. Near term, probably the greatest need is sustaining vitality of our downtown through the major bridge and rail construction projects. Thank you. We do not know what shape our support might take, but we ask all of our community to understand the impacts, to support our local businesses when they can, and to help us work through this as one. Longer term, I believe, we need to clearly define our community future. Some argue smart growth would be to add mixed use to Exchange Street, where youthful companies might establish and employees find traction in being able to live, work, and play without motor transport. We've also had opportunities for downtown development and perhaps concurrently pursue a parking garage. We have a need to define what we want Route 7 South to look like. I challenge us as a community to work now with our town planners to describe that future growth wishes and develop a plan to provide a roadmap for future growth in our community. I know you're wondering what the select board does and what the town staff does. If that list doesn't give you an idea that we're a little bit busy, but thank you. That ends my report.
Nick Artem.
Thank you, Governor. For the past several years, I've been fortunate to have what I think is the best assignment in our town meeting, the presenting of the annual town report dedication. Each year, we extend this to a member of the community who has made Middlebury a better place with their efforts and countless hours of service. It's an impressive list of individuals who have received this honor in the past, and this year, that impressive list continues as we recognize Carl Neuzen. Carl is one of Middlebury's own, who was born and raised here. After graduation from high school, he went on to college and law school, and in 1966, he returned to Middlebury to practice law, first as an associate before forming his own firm of Neuzen Dupree in Putnam. Carl could have practiced law and spent his free time on personal activities, but for anyone who knows him, he had to be involved in the community. From 1967 to 1973, he served on the Board of Directors of the Addison County Chamber of Commerce. Carl served in the Vermont National Guard, retiring in 2001 with the rank of Colonel. From 1968 to the present, he's been active in the Middlebury Rotary Club and served as its president, receiving one of their highest awards for community service, the Paul Harris Award. He was an incorporator and organizer of the Addison County United Way, an organizer with the Middlebury Volunteer Ambulance Association, a co-founder and director of the Middlebury Land Trust, and president of Middlebury Friends of Hockey. And for nine years, Carl was a member of the Middlebury Select Board, including two years as its chair, and he continues to serve the board as Middlebury's delegate on the Addison County Regional Planning Commission. Several of my colleagues, both past and present on this board, know Carl during his tenure as Middlebury's town attorney. Periodically, we need his expertise to understand issues and complexities on legal matters so that we could make informed decisions in the best interest of our citizens while complying with the rule of law. And for this, Carl was always and immediately helpful. Actually, let me tell you how it really went with Carl. He'd come to our meetings to assist and would start a discussion with all sorts of legalese words such as admissible cause of action, remand, de novo, procuriam, and as he presented this information, his opinions, it was common to see seven board members with glazed-over eyes and facial expressions that silently said, "What in the world's this guy talking about?" Carl, procuriam is not a word used in standard typical communication. I recall one time looking over toward Kathleen Ramsey and Victor Nuovo, and they had a glazed-over look, and I realized that if Kathleen and Victor didn't understand Carl's terminology, then it was hopeless for me to even try. But then suddenly Carl would show that he was in fact capable of explaining things in common-use language, and it all made sense. I think that's Carl's way. Start with confusion to get our attention, and then, once he had it, provide the needed information in a logical and common-sense manner. And you know, Carl, it worked. Carl, where are you? Come on up here. Carl, you're a fine and honorable man, and thank you for your many years of dedication to our community.
I just lost a bet. Last night, my grandchildren bet that I couldn't get out two words without crying. And they know pop-pop really well. That's what I go by now. Anyway, with a great appreciation, I'm receiving this honor from the town. I'm very, very happy to accept the dedication, and it doesn't mean that I plan to leave this earth, although a lot of people understand that there have been a couple tough times in the last few months. But we're on the right side of the earth today, and I hope to continue to serve the town. Thank you.
Well, Carl, you can see by the reaction of your friends and neighbors that we are deeply grateful for your long and dedicated service, and this unanimity is what we call procuriam in the town meeting business, so...
I actually thought it was spice.
Well, thanks for all you've done and continue to do. Annually, at our town meeting, we present the Bob Collins Award on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Committee, and I'd like to invite Selectman Farad Khan to come forward and our recreation program coordinator Dustin Hunt, if Dustin is here. Part of our fitness program, Dustin. You have to kind of run the gauntlet.
I also want to introduce Brian Hald, who is our new program coordinator assistant. He's been here about six months, and we are so happy to have him here. Good evening, everyone. It is my absolute pleasure to be presenting the Robert E. Collins Award tonight. This award has been given out annually at town meetings since 1974 and recognizes a deserving individual that has shown a commitment and dedication to the Middlebury Parks and Recreation Department. Robert E. Collins passed away in 2009 after decades of dedicated civic duty. Bob, as he was known by his family and friends, was a Middlebury village trustee, a member of the American Legion, the Middlebury Rotary, Masonic Lodge Number 2, and a charter member of the Middlebury Junior Chamber of Commerce. Bob was also the founder and first president of Friends of Middlebury Hockey, which serves an advisory role for youth hockey in the Memorial Sports Center. Most notably, Bob was the chair of the Middlebury Recreation Council for 10 years. During his time as chair, he helped raise funds to establish the present Middlebury Recreation Park, which is located just over by Mary Hogan School. To sum things up, you simply cannot go anywhere in Middlebury without seeing something Bob Collins left his fingerprints on. It is in Bob's honor tonight that we present the 2018 Robert E. Collins Award to another civic-minded visionary, Susan Vegas. Susan and her husband moved to the area in 1972 after he accepted a position at Middlebury College. Prior to moving to Vermont, Susan received a B.S. from Columbia University and a master's in Spanish from the University of Wisconsin. Susan used her acquired skills to become a volunteer translator at the Open Door Clinic when it opened in 1993, and would later go on to serve five years on the Board of Directors. As she developed relationships with these underserved families, she found her true calling in life and has dedicated almost every waking moment to giving these families a voice. As Heidi Solis, the Open Door Clinic's executive director, states, "Susan is an extraordinary advocate. Not only does she address the health needs of the community, but the psychosocial, financial, and nutritional ones as well. What she does is amazing." On most days, chuchi, as her families call her, can be found carting around her grandkids to make sure they have the same opportunities as other kids their age. A typical day in Susan's life means getting one child to gymnastics, another to swim lessons, one to soccer practice, and another one to a doctor's appointment, all before noon. Her complex schedule is enough to make any parent's head spin, and she does this for an astounding 25-plus families in our community. In her free time, Susan has taught figure skating lessons for the past 30 years, often waiving the fees for families that cannot afford them. She patiently helps families gain access to scholarship funds and grants, and if there is ever a balance left to pay, Susan often pays for that balance out of her own pocket without hesitation. Susan's commitment to these children has paved the way for help... Or, sorry. Susan's commitment to these children has paved the way for them to be able to participate in programs and gain valuable social and team-building skills that will help them become successful adults. In a world surrounded by uncertainty and negativity, Susan has remained a constant guiding light to these families and our department and our community as a whole. Susan, tonight we recognize you for your accomplishments, but we will continue to celebrate you every day for the lives you have touched and the role model and mentor you continue to be. Susan, please come forward and accept your award, which reads, "Robert E. Collins Award, presented to Susan Vegas for your many years of service and dedication to the Middlebury community and beyond, dated March 5th, 2018."
Thank you, Susan, and congratulations. We appreciate all you've done for our community. And Dustin, thanks for stepping up. Farad, another acknowledgement.
Thank you, Governor. It's an honor for me to read this on behalf of the select board for Terry Arnold. She was actually also a dear friend of mine, and we sorely miss her. The select board would like to take this opportunity to recognize the service of Terry Arnold, who served the town of Middlebury as Director of Parks and Recreation for the past five years. We want to express our appreciation to Terry for her years of service to the town of Middlebury and extend our best wishes on a new life in Washington State. Just so you know that she just landed yesterday. She posted on social media, so good luck to her.
We'll miss Terry, but we're very grateful for her service to the community. Laura Assermeley has some acknowledgements on behalf of the board.
We're not done with service. No way. We know a lot of you out there are serving our community, and we want to recognize a couple of staff that have gone on and that have served us well, including our former Ilesley Library Director, Kevin Unwrath, who many of you remember, served us since 2013 in our 93-year-old building, which you know is planned for revision, which we're excited about. So Kevin was a real die-hard believer in literacy and media and makerspaces and innovation, and he really took us through an important past couple of years, so we really thank him, and we welcome our new Ilesley Library Director, Dana Hart, who's with us, and I'll ask her to stand so you can meet her if you haven't yet. There's Dana. So Dana's formerly of the Thomas Watson Library in New York City, and so she brings a whole new, fresh perspective to us here in Middlebury. And Kevin headed off to Shelburne, which is also going through an expansion project, so he didn't escape that. So that's Kevin. And then on our Middlebury Police Force side, we have Officer Don Sweet, who's with us for 28-plus years, serving us well in Middlebury, so we really appreciate his commitment and service, unfailing, exemplary... service, unfailing, exemplary, loyal, you know, for us here in Middlebury. So we thank Don, too, and wish him well. So I know out there, we have a number of you who have served on our Select Board. If you're out there and you served on Select Board, would you stand up, please?
Carl?
And you know Carl did, too. Yes. So we really appreciate service on Select Board. I really value service on Select Board. I came on to see Susan Shashak serve on Select Board, and we see that she is going to be rotating off of Select Board this year. We really, deeply, deeply appreciate Susan for her tireless work on Select Board. You know she has been very committed to us, you know, looking after all of us. She hails from East Middlebury, but she serves all of us, as we all do, so all of you. So during her tenure on Select Board and as Vice Chair this year and Chair of our Infrastructure Committee, she really was very thoughtful, insightful, and committed. And you heard the laundry list of projects we had during her tenure. Incredible, you know, very busy time. So she played a key role in those major projects, the construction of our new town office and rec center, the rail bridge construction project we're engaged in right now. And if you know infrastructure, that's roads, bridges, buildings, lands.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, pipes, you name it, you know. So a very busy department, and we appreciate her professionalism, her caring, her courtesy, and her hard work, always very even and really seeking out all of our voices, our voices on the board and your voices in the community. So we want to recognize Susan with this plaque of appreciation.
I just want to say thank you to all the people who asked for help, for all the people who voted for me, for all the people who didn't vote for me. Thank you for coming out and voting anyway. But I just want to say thank you. It's been a really wonderful learning experience for me and a real privilege to, oh, God, see Carl? It's been a real privilege for me to serve, and I thank you.
We thank you, Susan, and good luck with whatever comes next. We're sure you'll be around. With me on the platform tonight are Ann Webster, our Town Clerk, and Monica Sanchez Webb, our Recorder. We appreciate their assistance this evening. Any other town officials want to add to their printed reports, or pixel reports that are on the website? Any questions of town officers at this point before we move on to the action articles? Yes, sir?
Could I ask the moderator if the rules of the meeting permit a friendly amendment to a warned article?
Oh, sure.
Thanks. My name is Joe McVay. I find the article "to act upon the reports of the town offices" somewhat vague. It's unclear to me what action we are intended to take, and I would ask if it might be possible to amend this amendment, sorry, this article to read, to accept the reports of the town officers, or?
That was the motion, actually. And, no, no, you make a good observation. It's, I guess, worded this way so that you could reject them, if you'd like. But actually, the motion I heard was to accept them, and that's what I'll put to a vote right now, unless there are any other questions or further discussion. If not all in favor of accepting the reports of the town officers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and you've accepted their reports. Article II. Shall the town vote to adopt the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2019, which is July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019, in the amount of $10,574,426, with a portion thereof in the amount of $7,331,905 to be raised by taxes? What's your pleasure regarding Article II?
Ann moves the adoption. Susan seconds. So we'll now invite our Town Manager, Kathleen Ramsey, to give a brief overview of our proposed 2019 budget.
Good evening, everyone. As Brian mentioned, the Select Board worked hard to develop a budget proposal which maintains essential public services while minimizing the impact on the tax rate. Here is an overview of the FY19 budget request, showing expenditures by category. These expenditures include operating expenses, capital expenses, and employee benefits. As you see in the chart, Public Works is $2.7 million, or 25% of our expenditures. Public Safety, including Fire and Police, is $2.5 million, or 24% of our expenditures. Libraries, $775,000, or 7%. Recreation, $650,000, or 6%. Administration, including Town Clerk, public recording, birth certificates, et cetera. Planning, Town Manager's Office assessing, is $1.4 million, or 13%. Okay, how do we pay for that? This chart shows an overview of the revenue budget for FY19. A full 70% of our revenue, $7.3 million, comes from property taxes. Gifts and payment from the college, $1.2 million, or 12%. The local option tax, $650,000, or 6%. State and federal revenue, $363,000, or 3%. Town interfund and school transfers, about $300,000, or 3%. And charges for services and other, $533,000, or 5%. The surplus for the previous year that the Select Board chose to apply to this budget was $150,000, or 1.4%. Our major drivers for this year, as usual, are wages and benefits, and a requested increase in capital improvements of $57,484. Offsetting these requested increases are an increase of 1.4% in the Grand List, which offsets about $99,000 worth of expenditures. Reductions in property and casualty insurance premiums, more than $36,000, and a reduction in the Police K-9 Program expense. Our first year, which is this year, of the Police K-9 Program, had considerable startup expenses. That line has been reduced by $24,500 for this year. Each year, the Select Board reviews five of the social service agencies per their appropriation policy for health and human service agencies. They decided to do this several years ago, as these health and human service agencies are included in the budget from year to year, and they were never really spotlighted. So we have, this year, we're reviewed Hospice Volunteer Services, AgeWell, formerly CVAA, the Parent-Child Center, Women Safe, and Addison Central Teens. Hospice Volunteer Services is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization requesting funding from the town of Middlebury in the amount of $2,000 to support the provision of programs and services to Middlebury residents facing the end of life, grieving the loss of a loved one, or seeking educational resources about dying and grieving. AgeWell, for more than 40 years, AgeWell, formerly CVAA, has provided services and support that allows seniors to stay independent and remain healthy at home. With funding in the amount of $3,000, the same as this year, from the town of Middlebury, AgeWell offers care and service coordination, meals on wheels, community meals, wellness programs, social activities, transportation services, expertise in Medicare, insurance, and long- and short-term care options, and a helpline. 271 people from Middlebury received services from AgeWell last year. The Parent-Child Center. While the Parent-Child Center is probably best known for its work with adolescent families and young children, their services are intended for any family who needs and wants them. There are many services offered by the Parent-Child Center include helping families to assess their children's physical and cognitive development, offering consultation and support to families and childcare providers around young children's social, emotional, and behavioral development, and offering play groups around the county to promote social interactions for children and parents. 411 Middlebury residents were served by the Parent-Child Center last fiscal year, and the Parent-Child Center is requesting the amount of $10,000 in support from the town of Middlebury, the same as last year. Women Safe is a Middlebury-based nonprofit that helps area victims of domestic abuse with services including support for victims, both in person and by phone, transitional housing, and training and education. 135 Middlebury residents were served last year. 281 students and 261 adults received prevention and education services. Women Safe is requesting $5,000 from the town of Middlebury, the same amount budgeted in the current fiscal year. Addison Central Teens Act is a local organization made up of teens, adults, and community members. The Teen Center, located at 77 Mary Hogan Drive, the town-owned building formerly known as the Warming Hut, provides teens with a safe place to hang out with friends and also enables them to grow, develop tolerance for other views, and build the habits and skills needed to be engaged citizens of our community. The Teen Center served 86 Middlebury residents last fiscal year, with a total of 1,399 visits by Middlebury residents. The Teen Center is requesting $35,000 in support from the town of Middlebury, a $5,000 increase from the current fiscal year, FY18. I'll turn the podium over to Susan Shashak, who will give you an overview of the capital improvements budget request.
Susan?
Thanks, Jim and Kathleen. So Capital Improvements has increased its funding for infrastructure improvements over last year's request by an amount of $57,484. We have continued to focus on addressing aging infrastructure and deferred maintenance in a systematic way by inventorying infrastructure and facility needs and prioritizing these projects based on available funding. In addition to a large slate of ongoing projects, major projects planned for the coming year include the following. Charles Avenue, from the school stop sign north towards Water Street. The project includes stormwater and curbing improvements, road recycling, paving, and street lighting. Water main and sewer main replacements will be funded by the Water and Sewer Fund. Shardville Road will involve riverbank stabilization of 210 feet, road surface recycling and paving of 2,720 feet. The Seymour Street Pulp Mill Bridge, oh, sorry, road sidewalk project is being done in cooperation with the Vermont Agency of Transportation, the Addison County Regional Planning Commission, and the town of Waybridge. Then we have the reconstruction of the basketball courts in Harold Curtis Park in partnership with the East Middlebury Fire District. And I think Brian mentions that capital investments, upcoming projects, looking ahead, the Select Board is going to be working on two major projects that will be bringing to voters for bond votes anticipated in November of 2018, and they are the water system improvements and the East Middlebury Village Flood Resiliency Project. Should we ask a question? I don't know if people had questions or not, but...
Kathleen, I think has just a couple more comments, and then we'll invite questions.
Okay. Overall, the FY19 budget request reflects a $211,260, or 2% increase in spending, and results in a tax increase of slightly over one cent, or just over 1%. You see here the categories that make up your municipal tax bill, your budget support being the first line, voted exemptions for veterans, the fire equipment fund at two cents, Business Development Fund is no longer included in the tax rate, for your total municipal budget of just over 99 cents. Your decision on Article 5 will affect the tax rate for the coming fiscal year. And, just quickly, looking ahead, while this is our fourth year proposing a budget requiring a level or minimally increased tax rate, keep in mind that increases in the following expenses: health insurance, vehicle and heating fuel, mandates including the cleanup of Lake Champlain, and uncertainty on the future of state and federal funding will put significant upward pressure on budgets in FY19 and beyond. So now we'll open it up to questions.
Steve Meyer. And we should note that our department heads are here to answer specific questions, if you have any directed to them as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I had just a simple question about the Charles Avenue project, and the, in particular, about the lighting, and whether the lighting part of the project will be for the entire length of the project or only certain length of it.
Dan?
Sure. So does the light start at?
Dan, could you get to a mic?
Steve, could you bring him that wireless mic? Sorry.
We want all your fans and our television audience to be able to hear you.
Sure. The lighting starts at the little break in the fence where people park at the north end of the parking lot, and then they walk out on the sidewalk and then down the curve towards the Universalist Society. That's where the lighting starts. There's be six lights on, like, 14-foot poles. So it's not the whole street, because some of the parking lot in the school parking lot lighting takes care of that, so we're not doing the whole street.
Mike, maybe I'll stay here. My question, I guess I'd have to think about that. So not, I'm still, I guess my question is a little bit concerned about that part to the north, that the light furthest to the north, then north from there to Water Street, to the next light, and is that still, it's a pretty dark area through there, and my question is whether that dark area is still going to be there, and if so, why wouldn't we take care of that as part of this?
Okay, just to clarify, so the downhill sidewalk that goes down around the curve to about across from the Universalist Building is where it's going to end. So that dark part of that curve is the only portion we're doing. Yes?
Now, I had one other question. I don't know if it's appropriate now or on Article 5, but I thought I had understood Brian to say that there was excess in the local option tax fund of a couple hundred thousand dollars that was being applied, but then I think I'm seeing here elsewhere that we're only actually voting on the $57,000 increase. Did I misunderstand earlier?
Right, that is the surplus that's going to be, that the Select Board is suggesting be applied to this year's budget.
Okay, thanks.
Questions on the proposed budget? Questions on the proposed budget? Ruth Hardy.
I just wanted to follow up on Steve's question. I don't know if this should be under Article Five, but what is the balance in that fund?
Estimated at one point three million.
And is it, what is the purpose? Is there a fund purpose for that that's defined somewhere that...
Yes, that's for the debt service and maintenance of the bridge. We recently obtained an engineer's report estimate of the maintenance requirements, and so we added the debt service. There's a detailed spreadsheet online that looks at the debt service and maintenance requirements of the fund, and as a first-year proposal, the Select Board felt comfortable with bringing forward fifty-seven thousand dollars.
So, the fund purpose allows for using some of it to be toward the general fund budget?
That is why we're coming back to town meeting with the question.
Got it, I see, okay, thanks.
Veronica.
Victoria.
Victoria.
It was my understanding that it was one point three million over and above what's necessary for maintenance and debt, or is that...
Right.
Right. So, whether it's now or Article Five, we are currently carrying, well, three million dollars in debt on borrowed money. Eight hundred thousand of that is in interest. If we have that kind of money sitting unused, I'm wondering whether, well, you're asking for the fifty-four thousand dollars for the capital improvements, the related material that you're gonna, uh, equipment that you're going to be asking us to approve, seems only appropriate that that should be paid for out of that fund rather than creating more debt. And I encourage the Selectmen, I've already mentioned this to you at an earlier meeting, but that to please come back to the voters and ask for the, get the approval of using that money for other things rather than increasing our taxes. It's one point three million dollars that we could very well use for important investments, so...
I think that is what the Board was hoping to do, is get the sense of the town, how much of an appetite you had for using the funds.
Yes, sir.
Ross Conrad. I wanted to go back to Dan with a question about the lighting on Charles Avenue, and wondering if those lights are going to be hooked up to Green Mountain Power's electric grids that would be paying for keeping them on all the time, or will they be solar-powered?
No, thank you. There we go, okay. They will be connected to Green Mountain Power. They are LED, and they will also be on a timer. So, we've talked to the school that about ten o'clock at night is their latest program, so they'll be on at dusk and then off about ten, ten PM. We didn't want to affect the neighbors too much with, you know, air and lighting, so...
Is there a reason why we're not looking at solar lighting there?
We didn't, we briefly talked about it and went no further, so. Questions of reliability and long term?
Yeah, well, they've been around for a while. My understanding is that solar lighting can work really well. You don't have to pay for the fuel, you know, the electricity, and it has a, less of a carbon footprint, and I'm hoping maybe in the future, as a town, we can be looking at those kind of options a little more intently. Thank you.
Sure. Questions on the budget? Victoria, go ahead.
In the capital improvements budget, I'm wondering, that says library department, twenty-five thousand this year, can you explain that in more detail?
That's the start of funding for a boiler, perhaps, if there is a crisis. Dan could also speak to that, if you want more detail.
Dan has a pedometer, right?
I should have one. Yes, Kathleen is right. We had some issues with the boiler leaking this past summer. Some of it's probably due to just sitting there, not being used, so we're going to start to, a process of, you know, getting with a consultant and see what it might take to replace that boiler. I can't remember how old it is, thirty, twenty-five, thirty years, something like that, so we're going to take a look at it before it bites us.
It just seems that with the whole library renovation, I know it's not immediate, but with that coming, you would want to plan whatever you're going to use for heat in terms of the future, instead of just replacing what we have now at a big cost, and consider alternate kinds of fuel or renewable energy. You've got the possibility for solar panels on the building next door, and there ought to be alternatives investigated rather than just investing in another oil burner. Heat pumps, whatever you can, it just seems like it'd be planning better with the renovation of the library coming.
Library Director Dana Hart has a comment.
A really quick comment about the boiler. I've only been here two months, so I'm not qualified to talk on much, but I can say in that time, the boiler has ceased to work twice. My first week here, it flooded the boiler room, and this morning, the children was completely out, or, sorry, the heat was completely out in the children's section of the library. So, as much as we want to be looking towards the renovation for longer-term sustainable improvements, I can say that the boiler at the library might need attention sooner than the renovation can get here.
Other questions on the budget? Any discussion on the budget? If not, the question is on adoption of Article Two, which is our budget for fiscal year 2019. Are you ready for that question? If so, all in favor of adopting Article Two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it, and you've adopted Article Two. Article Three, shall the voters authorize the Select Board pursuant to Twenty-Four VSA Section Seventeen Eighty-Six A Subsection B to replace town vehicles and equipment in accordance with the schedule here and after set forth, and to finance the purchase of same by borrowing funds in a total amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars over a term not to exceed five years. The schedule of vehicles and equipment is one police cruiser and related equipment, one street sweeper, one skid steer, and one asphalt hot box. What's your pleasure regarding Article Three? Heather moves adoption of the article, seconded by several, far odd. Heather, would you like to speak to the article?
Good evening, all. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. It's so great to see so many of you here in our new space, and I hope you had a chance to take care of refreshments, or take part in refreshments. And there's more over there, so hit it up on the way out. Okay, so the first item in our equipment fund for FY19 is the replacement of one cruiser. We maintain a two-one-two schedule, so that even numbered budget years, we replace two police vehicles, and in odd ones, obviously, we replace one. So, this cycles out older, higher maintenance cars, and allows us some trade-in towards newer purchases of our newer vehicles. The estimated cost of replacing one cruiser is twenty-eight thousand. Does anyone have any questions about the police cruiser replacement? Nope, we'll move on. The second item is a potential street sweeper replacement. Our current mechanical street sweeper is a nineteen ninety-nine. We are proposing to apply for a grant in August of this fiscal, or, well, I mightn't be in the wrong fiscal year. I'm always in the wrong fiscal year, sorry. In August of eighteen is when the grant application would come about, and our Department of Planning and Public Works, Dan Warner, feels confident that we have a good chance to request a vacuum sweeper purchase. There is a twenty-five percent town match to that grant, which would make our estimated sharing cost fifty-six thousand. This also helps us comply with some of the new regulations in Lake Champlain cleanup, and Department of Public Works has reviewed, and gone to some demonstrations, and do have a unit in mind that they would like to purchase, and I have details about that if anyone's interested. Any questions on the street sweeper?
Yes, sir.
Then we will have to revisit the idea, because all we're budgeting for is, is the match, so...
Make sure I get your name, sir, for the...
George Warren.
Sure, and his question was, what happens if the grant doesn't come through?
Yes, I should. It is a, I don't know if Dan would like to give, poor Dan, he should have the pedometer on, any more details about the grant application, but other towns have been successful in requesting street sweepers through this particular grant application, and we feel confident that Middlebury has a good, good chance of being awarded a grant.
Yeah, this one is run through VTранs. This is their, I guess this last session was their second year. They're going to redo it another year. I believe there are five or six towns that already have gone through this exact process, allocated the funds at town meeting, and then got a successful grant. So, it's, as of today, it sounds pretty good.
Any other questions on the street sweeper? Nope, okay. So, moving on, the third item is a skid steer. This piece of equipment is proposed to replace a two-thousand John Deere tractor loader that was originally purchased for sidewalk maintenance and is now being used at the wastewater treatment plant. It has been a very well-used piece of equipment and is in need of replacement. The skid steer is an upgrade to that piece of equipment, and it does provide us with some additional functionality within our departments and would be shared by our other departments. It would be used with, by highway, parks and recreation, water, wastewater, and therefore, because it's shared out of other, not just general funds, we're proposing that the cost or forty percent of the share come from the general fund. The estimated purchase price is sixty thousand, forty percent of that is twenty-four thousand, which would come out of the general fund. Any questions about the skid steer purchase? Okay, moving on. The last item proposed is an asphalt hot box. This provides ability to permanently repair potholes, water main repair cuts with hot patch, particularly in the winter, whereas right now, we can typically only repair things with cold patch, and the patch is not permanent, often requires our personnel to go back in the spring and make more permanent fixes to potholes and repairs from water main breaks. The purchase of this equipment would be split again between highway, water, and wastewater departments. The proposed share of the highway general fund budget is sixty percent, or fourteen thousand four hundred dollars of the estimated twenty-four thousand dollar purchase price. So, does anyone have any questions about what this piece of equipment does? It also allows us to do some recycling of material, whereas typically, when hot mix is purchased, it needs to be used within a certain amount of time. This piece of equipment will allow us to reuse and recycle and hot mix so that we can be more efficient with our purchases and do a better job on repairs.
Frank Winkler?
What does permanent mean in this context?
Wait for the mic here.
That's an excellent question.
Frank's question is, what does permanent mean in this context?
So, typically, if you've noticed, cold patches, and particularly in potholes, once do we get to this point in the year, are no longer there, and the plows have pulled them up. When we use a hot mix, it tends to bind better, last longer, as long as pavement can reasonably last. If you're looking for a specific timeframe, I can't give that to you, but maybe Dan could.
Well, Frank's an astronomer, so in his context, you know... Any questions on any of the elements of the, of the article? The equipment project? Victoria?
Does the wording, the purchase by same by borrowing funds preclude using the bridge extra money to do it instead?
It's... Yes, so, thank you for the reminder. So, we're approving the purchases, but the actual purchase of the equipment won't happen until the following fiscal year, so we can certainly entertain that in the time between when we agree to purchase them and when we actually take the money to make the purchase. Does that make sense? This is why I have trouble with the whole fiscal year part. I'm sorry?
It just has, have to come back to a vote, if, it would have to come back to a vote again, to use that money.
Yes, yes, yes.
Other questions on the vehicle and equipment? Oh, Laura.
That was sort of my question, too, just to make sure that we were clear what it meant, so you really answered the question, and I do hope that when we get to Article Five, we'll have robust discussion about how you feel about the future of our local option tax.
Any other questions of Heather on the vehicle and equipment article? Ruth Hardy.
Uh-oh, sorry, Heather. No, I just, I got confused with the fiscal year, so we're approving this now, but we wouldn't actually purchase it, purchase these exciting equipment pieces until FY20, because this is the FY19 budget that, that we just approved.
So, am I correct, Kathleen? We make, we approve the purchase, we make the purchase, but actually, like bonding for them would happen in fiscal year twenty. So, we would, as part of our budget for fiscal year twenty, decide how that money would come out of the budget.
Unless the voters tonight wanted to use the bridge fund, in which case they would be cash, not bond payments.
So, what that might look like is, so you approve the purchases tonight, Select Board actually makes the purchases next fiscal year, and interest and principal aren't due on the borrowing until FY20. So, they could include in their FY20 budget, no interest and principal, and propose that the, that the funding come from the Cross, the Cross Street Bridge Reserve Fund. So, money, this principal and interest on these pieces of equipment is not included in the FY19 budget.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that assumes borrowing to pay for them, that's, okay.
Other questions or discussion on, on the article? Yes? Yes.
Dorothy Mammon. Maybe I'm just a dummy on this point, but I, it's, it's, the question reads by borrowing the money, so I, so it seems like if we vote, approve this question, we are approving borrowing the money, so I'm just not getting the, how we're not, we are, are we borrowing the money or are we not borrowing the money? I don't get it, I guess. Sorry.
So until the board comes back with you, with, to you for approval to use more cross street bridge funds in a warned article, it couldn't go forward with the grant application per se unless it has approval from the voters. We need to finance them somehow. So if the, if, I think if there's a strong indication from the town meeting that you would like to see us or the board purchasing equipment with the cross street bridge fund, then the board should consider that in the next budget go around.
Or is there opportunity to talk about that with this question five? Will we decide not to borrow the money and to use, can we do that tonight or not? We can't do that tonight.
I believe that you could vote to increase the amount coming out of the cross street bridge fund to support the general fund.
If we didn't want to borrow for these? Okay, thanks.
And this article does say in an amount not to exceed 122,000, which means the board could choose to borrow less or none.
The board never has to borrow. It's up to the board to decide whether it actually goes through with the borrowing or not.
John Tenny.
At the risk of glazing a few eyes over a little, a little history, this program of replacing equipment goes back to the early 2000s, I think about 2002 or '03. It was inaugurated by then-manager Bill Finger and the whole impetus here was to bring the, the stable of necessary equipment in the, in the town's equipment pieces up to date and to keep them up to date without having spikes up and down in, in the budgets. And so through a program of regular replacement scheduling and funding by low-cost municipal debt, then the equipment pieces would be purchased year by year as required and the costs of that funding would be borne through the budgets of the individual departments that use the equipment. And so you see charges in those, all of those budgets year by year for retiring those, those debts and they are part of the cost of, of work and operations within those departments. That way we have had much more stability in the equipment and in the budgets for all of the voters. And just as importantly, it helps meet the, the goal of municipal governance in that those who are benefiting from the service at the time are the ones paying for it. It's not somebody paying ahead for somebody in the future, but it's people paying at the time of realizing the service, they're, they're retiring the debt.
Brian.
Thank you, John. And actually, that tracks really well what we've had for discussions on the select board and I understand you're looking at it and you're saying, well, we've got surplus funds, why not use that for a piece of equipment that we need? But as John so well pointed out, the way we have our equipment replacement now, it cycles very nicely and we're able to manage that through our annual budgets. As you've seen, we've brought you a balanced budget for the most part each year for the last four years and some of that is that these, these planned cycles, planned replacements at a very low borrowing rate, around 2%, does not impact the budget the way you might think it does. Really where, what we discussed at the select board level is the thing that has the largest impact is when we have infrastructure needs, South Street for instance. Remember we bonded and we didn't even have enough to get the South Street project done and those go up much more than the 2% interest, the cost of those and forecasting that. And so retaining some of that funds to be able to accept on a, on a basis that comes up as a surprise, a need for an infrastructure project or allowing us to keep at least our infrastructure budget balanced for you. And pulling from that is really what we wanted to talk, to talk about because it allows us then to continue to keep taxes in check over the long haul. That's what we talked about at the select board and the reason why we've brought it before you is it's separate, a separate article so that we could have that discussion and seek your permission to utilize those funds for infrastructure needs when they exceed what we have for a level funded budget.
Yes, sir.
So, as I said, my eyes glazed over. Mark Wilch. So I'm just wondering, is it possible to amend this article to say, I mean, I think we're all in agreement that we should need to finance in some manner, but, but not necessarily by borrowing or maybe financing in a manner to be determined at a later date, but this article authorized you to borrow and I wonder if we can't maybe just eliminate that portion of the article to make it not, so without having to say, we're going to borrow, but maybe we will borrow, but maybe not, but, you know what I'm saying?
And we usually, each year, so we vote on, we're voting on equipment that we will buy throughout the FY '19 and we generally, the way that the cash flow works for the town, it's such that we don't need to borrow until it, towards the end of, of the year and then we would go out and bond those monies and replenish our checkbook. I think that by authorizing us to borrow if necessary is probably still the appropriate language and if we don't need it, we will not borrow it, but it would authorize us if needed to, to borrow those funds.
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, we need a mic, sorry.
Roy Dastridge. Is it possible then to just offer a friendly amendment and they finance the purchase of by borrowing if necessary funds in a total? Just adding if necessary, is that, is that possible? It's already been warned, so I'm questioning whether you can just put a friend in the amendment in. Seems to be the issue that people are concerned about here.
Certainly in order. Where would you like to insert that? Total amount to exceed 122,400, or at the end of the sentence?
No, the government funds if necessary.
Okay. So after the word funds, to insert the phrase if necessary. Roy moves that the article be amended by inserting after the word funds on the third line, the phrase if necessary. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Proposed amendment? Seconded by RJ. RJ.
RJ.
Discussion on the proposed amendment? Yes, Dorothy.
I'm not sure how you'd know if it was necessary. What do we mean by as necessary? So is it really any different than the, than it already is?
Other discussion on the proposed amendment? If not, are you ready for the question? Question is, shall the article be amended as moved by Roy to add the phrase if necessary? All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Let's try it once more with, with full vigor. All in favor of the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The noes appear to have it. The noes do have it and the amendment does not pass. The recurring question is, shall Article Three be adopted? Are you ready for that question?
Yes.
If so, all in favor of adopting Article Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it and you've adopted Article Three. Article Four, shall the town vote to collect taxes on real property for fiscal year 2018 and 2019 in three equal installments due in the treasurer's office on the 15th day of August 2018, the 15th day of November 2018, and the 15th day of March 2019? What's your pleasure regarding Article Four? Moved by Carl Noiza, a man eager to pay his taxes. Seconded, is there a second? Seconded by, oh, Sasse, Sasse Carey. Discussion on Article Four? If not, are you ready for that question? If so, oh, yes ma'am.
Is this by postmark or is it in hand? I don't, I don't know how you guys do it here.
Your name.
My name is Ellen Curlmeyer and I don't, this is my first Middlebury town meeting and I don't know if, because it doesn't state, is this in hand on those dates or is it by postmark or how do you do it?
It was changed a couple of years ago to in hand.
Okay.
That's good. Good question. Any other discussion on Article Four? Are you ready for that question? If so, all in favor of adopting Article Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it and you've adopted Article Four. Article Five, shall the town vote pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2804A to authorize the select board to apply $57,484 in surplus funds from the cross street bridge fund to offset increased spending for capital improvements in the FY '19 general fund budget? What's your pleasure regarding Article Five? Moved by, and seconded by Laura. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to this.
I think we've already talked about it a little bit, but let me try to explain where the select board was coming from on this. So for two years now, we've been talking about and analyzing the fund balance and we sought some professional assistance because the one thing that we did not have was estimations on the recurring maintenance costs for the bridge. And so having that in hand, we, we ended up, as we were doing our budget this year, looking at it and it was a $1.3 million surplus that is growing each year. We hadn't brought it before the voters. Originally when the local option tax was established, it was established to fund the cross street bridge and to, to perform the maintenance and have a, a maintenance fund. However, being fiduciary responsible for the town's matters, we, we really felt that we were leaving some money that, that should be applied to our operations within the town and we looked at that, talked about, if you pulled it all out, it, it could disappear pretty, pretty quickly on just any one particular project. And so, given that the funds were established for an infrastructure part of the town, the cross street bridge, we felt that those funds that we continue to accrue could be utilized for infrastructure, other infrastructure throughout the town. And we felt that it would be appropriate, given that we had an interest, need in infrastructure expense in our budget this year, to ask you to approve the application of some of those funds to our increase in the infrastructure, which would bring our net tax rate to a .37 cent increase, less than one cent, less than a half a cent increase when it's all studied. And if you were amenable to that, we would have further discussions about how those funds might best be used in looking at the infrastructure needs of the community as opposed to shotgunning it and looking at everything. Because we, we really felt that the intent of the fund was infrastructure and we wanted to utilize those funds for continuing to maintain and support a really robust infrastructure for our community.
Questions on Article Five? Yes, sir.
Asher Nelson, can you explain if we have any other reserve funds to cover this type of unforeseen expense or, I mean, just give us a sense of what other backstop we have?
Right.
Rainy day fund.
Rainy day funds. And that's a very good question. We have typically maintained a surplus and...
So the FY '17, our last completed fiscal year fund balance is around $500,000 for the general fund. We have applied $150,000 for FY '18 and another $150,000 for the FY '19 budget, so that leaves us with a rainy day fund or surplus of about $200,000.
Which Asher is why we're not so anxious to, to draw it down to zero. We have other projects going on throughout the town that might have cost overruns or...
Ted Davis?
Yes, Brian. You, so we have a million something surplus, right? Which, what's the balance of the fund? And, and my, my second part would be, have, have we spent money already on, you know, bridge upkeep out of the fund?
Yes, that's what we do. It's been very minor so far. So we've been, part, part of the issue is that we originally anticipated $650,000 per year from the local option tax and we've actually been receiving more on the order of magnitude of $850,000 a year, so that's part of it. And over time, the debt service interest payment decreases slightly each year, so that's also contributing to some of the surplus in the fund.
Steve Meyer?
Thank you. So is the bridge reserve fund, is it, is it in, in an interest-bearing account? Do we make money off the surplus? And if so, rough, can you say something about how well we've done?
Just to the minimal interest rate that everyone else enjoys, maybe a little bit more. It's not in...
Like, some, like a half a percent or something is what we've been getting on it?
Yeah.
Something like that? Second, are there, are there any legal, actual legal restrictions on what we could use the money for? Is the choice, is the, a recommendation that you're making related to infrastructure improvements, your own considered just a policy recommendation or are there also legal restrictions of any sort or could we actually spend it in any part of the budget if that's what we wanted to do?
So the funding for the cross street bridge fund comes in large part from the local option tax and there is a restriction on the local option tax that cannot be used for educational purposes, can be used for municipal purposes only. So you're right that the select board is recommending the capital improvements as a policy recommendation.
Okay. And then my last question is just to, if you could shine, shine a little light, more light on why the choice of 57,000 was, did you, was it sort of a, just a rough sense of a small amount you wanted to start with or is there some?
That was the infrastructure increase for this year.
Okay. So, but it's not directly related to, part of the conversation tonight or part of your presentation, Brian, has been... your presentation, Brian, has been, at least connotes a little bit of, well, we want to make sure there's, we don't want to spend too much of it. So, imagining some sort of analysis that went into, well, we have this $1.3 million surplus, but there, we only wanted to, we wanted to make sure we kept at least half or three-quarters for these reasons? Or is it just that that was the number, and then we...
Test, test case, to be honest with you.
Okay.
We came up with that number because it directly correlated with the infrastructure expense increases. And we wanted to bring, we had a commitment that if we were going to spend any money out of there, other than for the bridge, that it needed to come before the voters. And so, it was a, it was a litmus test to see if the voters supported utilization of those funds for other purposes than the Cross Street Bridge, and to tie that to infrastructure needs of the community.
Thank you. Those are my questions. I'll just say, in, in general, I think this is, at least this makes sense in my head. So, I think this is a good proposal, and I'd probably be in favor of using more of it for similar or even other purposes. If, if that's part of what we want to try to do tonight, is get a little bit of that conversation going, I would be supportive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Yes, ma'am.
Who are you calling?
Hi, Chris Robbins. I have a couple of questions. Does this local option tax have a sunset? How many years of maintenance is it supposed to cover? And do we think the revenues might go down during the bridge construction, since there might be less business in town during that time?
So, the first question was...
Sunset?
Sunset. There isn't any sunset on that. It is a 30-year bonding period for the Cross Street Bridge. We took out the bonds in 2009. So, we're, we're looking at through 2039 for the debt service on the bridge. And then, your second question?
Is it supposed to cover maintenance just for the, for the future?
Debt service and maintenance. We have a 20- or 30-year maintenance plan over the life of the bridge that we've been looking at.
Okay. Then after that, this tax will still be in effect?
That's up to the voters.
Okay. And then, what about predicted revenues from this tax during the railroad reconstruction?
So, I used a five-year average in calculating what we're anticipating as revenue. We are currently over $900,000 a year in receipts, so that includes that, some, some reduction.
Rob Inshai.
Hi, thank you. I think, Brian, you had alluded earlier to, or somebody did, to the Economic Health Task Force that was put together last year, and I was a member of that. And one of the recommendations we made to the Select Board at the time was to consider using some percentage of the excess in this fund for infrastructure projects that will help our community. So, at that time, it was about the third water main break on Exchange Street, and, you know, using some of these funds, not drawing it down to zero, but using some of these funds. The recommendation was to use it for infrastructure. So, what the Select Board is talking about ties in with exactly with what the recommendations of the Economic Health Task Force, which were citizens of the community.
Ross Conrad. Get to a mic.
Yeah, Ross Conrad. So, Kathleen, you mentioned a maintenance plan. Does that plan give us an idea of the realistic worst-case scenario of how much we're going to need to keep maintaining the bridge, when we're going to need it?
Ross, we, we actually had engineers project it out, I think it's 20 years. And, yes, even with all of that, because of the continued reduction in our debt service obligations, we still feel we're in very good stead. Now, that said, mind you, this is a local option tax that is tied to the economic conditions, and so, we don't want to draw it down totally. So, I would ask that you provide some latitude to the Select Board in trying to make sure that we manage the budget appropriately.
Ellen Kurlmeyer. When I think of infrastructure, I think of the match for funds that, from the, your matching portion of a state grant for paving or putting in a new water main. Items I thought I heard being mentioned for this amount of money were new equipment. Is that what I understood? So, is that what you're talking? I'm not really sure what this $57,000 is being used for.
You're thinking correctly. We're simpatico on that. It's, it's, the other one was another article that we were talking about. This is a standalone article that does not tie back to the equipment purchases.
Okay. Well, I just, I guess I thought I heard people saying, can we use that excess money to pay for...
And we're asking not to.
Okay, that's, okay, now, thank you.
Fred Donnington.
Fred Donnington. I think the town is very fortunate to have this fund and the local option tax. I hope, I hope it isn't rescinded, and I hope, and I commend the board for not proposing to use it up all way, but think about how it might be conserved. Experience was, when we first adopted this, even though the economy was in recession in 2008, the funds grew more than we expected. And that's because it's a sales tax primarily, and there's rooms and meals and alcohol, but primarily, it's the sales tax on your electric bill, cable TV bill, and telephone bill, which everybody pays, including some tax-exempt properties that don't pay the property tax. So, it's a little odd that the bridge is paid for by, you know, that base, because we don't have a huge retail base like other areas. But it's a stable source of money, even in recession times. People seem to keep buying those, those things that, that give us that money. So, it's a welcome belief to the property tax, and I would encourage the board to use it sparingly over the years for really needed improvements. And I would urge you to do more longer-range capital improvements planning for wise use of that.
This article is called Cross Street Bridge Reserve Fund. I think you've gone about this in a somewhat wrong way. I think you've jumped ahead to ask for money. I think you should be first doing an article that says, what is the purpose of the fund? And what kinds of things should we be spending out of this fund, rather than just throwing $57,000 without an explanation of the fund, which we've been doing tonight? And I think it would be better to go back and, and have a, a vote on, should we be using the, what kinds of things should we be using this for? And how, how much perhaps per annum we should be using?
MCTV has asked that we use the stationary mics because when it's passed around, the sound is fading in and out on their signal. So, sorry. Other questions about Article V?
Ellen Cronin. My question is, did you look at whether we could reduce our debt service at all? Is our debt service all on low-interest municipal loans? Or are there any instances where we had to have higher interest in some of our debt service? And that would be infrastructure-related that we could use?
So, two-part response. First, we can't prepay our existing long-term loans for the Cross Street Bridge or other municipal buildings. And secondly, the Select Board has said that it's committed to looking at financing long-term, not, not financing, but paying for capital improvement projects with this money, perhaps in lieu of borrowing.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Or discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Heather. Peripheral vision isn't what it used to be.
So, part of our discussion as a Select Board sort of ran up against the time limits of when we had to have this budget ready to present to you, and using what the increase in the capital improvement budget was as a starting point for how to use these funds, you know, as what we're bringing to you tonight. But as a member of the Infrastructure Committee and plans for going forward over the next year, we hope to work with town staff to identify some projects that could be funded with the money in this surplus, that maybe the entire project or significant portion of it could come from the funds in this, you know, from this local option tax. And so, I anticipate, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, because I think we've all kind of agreed, that it would be a project that the Infrastructure Committee will be working on over the next year, is trying to identify, you know, what, what we would like to do with this money. So, I would encourage any of you that are interested to come, be a part of those meetings, and participate, and give us your opinion, even if it's by email. You can always email, sorry, Kathleen, our town manager, and then she can get that information to the Infrastructure Committee if you can't attend a meeting. But it is something that I anticipate having a conversation about in infrastructure this coming year.
Further discussion on Article V? Question is, shall, oh, I'm sorry, Laura.
Well, just extending what Heather said, you know, again, we're here just as a starting point with this discussion. I, I heard your, your point about looking conceptually about how we can use the money, and I can see that there's still consideration, like, is it just capital improvement projects versus something else? So, you're still mulling that, obviously. And yes, please participate over the next year in that discussion with us.
So, I'll just speak relative to that other thing we were talking about earlier. At this point, with the reserve fund, if you have a chunk of money, you can use that to kind of fund your own things on a, I like the idea of spreading out the purchases and smoothing out the costs for the vehicle replacements, and you can, you can do that with your own money instead of borrowing money. And it's something to think about, especially if our economy begins to have increasing inflation rates and interest rates start to go up. We could end up with, we have very low rates on borrowing right now for those vehicle purchases, but those could become more burdensome. And you wouldn't actually be spending this money so much as sort of redoing it, like I put aside money every month for capital expenses on my home. And then, when I have to buy a roof, I might have the money instead of having to borrow the money. So, that's just something to think about with this money, too.
Other discussion on Article V? Now, the question is, shall Article V be adopted? Are you ready for that question? If so, all in favor of adopting Article V, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and you've adopted Article V. Article VI, to transact other business proper to be done. Couple of announcements and presentations this evening. We'll start with a, a town meeting poll. Laura.
If you didn't see it yet, don't miss it. So, again, as in previous years, you have the opportunity to give us some feedback through a town meeting poll. So, I just wanted to tell you that it really does make a difference when you fill that out. Last year, we asked you about how you access your town news, for example, because we're really interested in whether our communication modes are working or not. And the majority of you said that you rely on our newspaper, the Addison Independent. You're aware of our town listserv, but some people were puzzled by what that meant, like listserv. And what we mean by that is that we have a Town of Middlebury email list that you can join to get notices. So, the poll gives you an opportunity to be added to that if you'd like to be. You don't have to wait to do the poll, or if you forgot to, you can always ask to be added to the Town of Middlebury email list to get our, our weekly blast, basically, on Fridays. So, we, we just also asked for feedback on town meeting, which you're experiencing tonight. Do you like this venue? We heard in the poll that you wanted easier access to the microphones, which we felt this would provide, that you wanted a little social time, which we experimented with. So, those were some of the things we heard that we tried to respond to this year, and we seek to continue to improve our town meeting. It's your meeting. We also asked about town committees, and whether you felt you needed to be from the Town of Middlebury in order to be on a town committee. And the majority of you thought that was a good idea, but you qualified that it really depended on the committee. And really, some committees require expertise of, of others that may work in the town, for example, but live elsewhere. So, that seemed very reasoned. So, those were some of the highlights from the 2017 Town Meeting Report, or Town, Town Poll, Town of Middlebury Town Poll. So, please fill that out. You can take it tonight and bring it back when you vote. You don't have to do it at the poll. And there are other surveys for you to complete, the typical Doyle Poll. There's one on our Town Forest. There's one on ACTOR. And our ACTOR bus service, especially if you're not a frequent user, to find out a little bit more about how you're feeling about the ACTOR bus, especially as we're looking at parking during the rail bridge construction project. So, we see and hope that ACTOR will be part of that solution, not an obstacle to that. So, so please give us some feedback on that as well.
Thank you, Laura. The only item on the town warning tomorrow is the election of officers. I'd like to invite anyone who wishes, who's seeking office tomorrow, to introduce himself
Hi, my name is Lindsay Fuentes George, and I'm running for Select Board. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I will be at the polls tomorrow. I'll be there at seven. I'm going to be there all day. I'm going to try to hang out. So, if you haven't had a chance to get to know me, if you didn't see the article, you know, the article's in the paper or whatever, and you'd like the chance to talk to me, that would be wonderful. I will be there. Yeah, thank you.
My, my name's Davina Dame, I'm running...
Get close.
Davina Dame, I'm running for a seat on the school board.
I just saw the fire department rushing out a little while ago. I hope everybody is safe out there. They do a great job. So, my name is Fahad Khan. I have lived in Middlebury for 23 years. Some of you might know that I own a small dollar store in this town. So, I was nominated last year to be on the Select Board for a year. I'm up for a three-year term now, and I ask for your support. Even though I'm in a small business, that's my passion, but I would be happy to work for any project that comes in front of me. I will work for you, 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 and even you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Mincher. I'm running for a three-year term on the Ilesley Library Board. I have been an active Ilesley Library patron since I was a baby, since I was very, very young my whole life. And I'm also in the museum field.
I've worked at several museums, have undergone big building projects. I think I'd be a good moderate voice for the renovation.
Good evening. For those of you don't, who don't know me, I'm Gary Baker. I'm excited to be running for the Select Board for a three-year term, and also excited to be using my over 40 years of community service and historical memory for the Town of Middlebury. My family, both sides, have been here for over 200 years in Vermont. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Doyle Wilch. I'm running for a one-year position on the Ilesley Library Board. I've been a librarian for 50 years, which is really hard to imagine, since I'm only 35. But I've worked as a librarian, as a director, as a dean, as a consultant. I've been to libraries all over, and I'm really excited and hopeful that Middlebury will have a library that's fabulously supportive of the community that it's in.
Thanks.
My name is John Frieden. I've wanted to be on the Middlebury Library Board for years, but I've only moved from New Haven to Middlebury five or six years ago. I've served on the board now for five years, during which I chaired the Library Building Committee, which was appointed jointly by the select board and by the trustees of the library. My background is I came to Middlebury to teach and did so. I started a business and ran it for 14 years, called Vermont Bicycle Touring, and I served for eight years in the state legislature, in the House. I'd love your vote. Thank you.
Joe.
Hello, my name is Joe McVeigh. I'm also a candidate for a three-year term on the Ilesley Library Board of Trustees, which also is responsible for the Sarah Partridge Library in East Middlebury. I'm a strong proponent of the library, and my sense is we've done so many wonderful things in this town over the past two years since I've lived here. We have a new town offices. We have a new police station. We have renovated our fire stations. We have a new bridge. We have a new recreation center. And meanwhile, the library has been standing by saying, excuse me, but we have some needs over here, too. And I would like to see the needs of the library addressed as well, and I'd like your vote. Thank you.
Other candidates? If not, although there are no public questions on the town warning tomorrow, there's one from our school district, and I want to invite Ruth Hardy, one of our representatives on the Addison Central School District Board, the new consolidated board, to offer some thoughts on the school budget that we'll be considering tomorrow. Ruth. Prior to Ruth's budget presentation, she'd like to ask a student in the high school to make a comment. Is there any objection to Greta Hardy Mattel making a
Thank you.
... comment on behalf of the high school? Well, go ahead, Greta. You have to come up to the microphone, though. Can you vault?
Hi, I'm Greta Hardy Mattel, and I'm a senior at Middlebury Union High School. And I wanted to make an announcement to those of you who are still here on behalf of a lot of high school students. We're currently involved in planning a school walkout on March 14th in protest to acts of gun violence, especially school shootings, and in support of common sense gun laws, as part of a national movement that's going on right now. As we are deeply saddened by the Parkland school shooting and all the school shootings that have come before, and inspired by the students in Parkland who are speaking up. And I wanted to let everyone here know that this is a real concern of students at the high school right now, that we are taking charge. This is not something that we were asked to do. We chose to do this in conjunction with the middle school and with Middlebury College. And we've been working to organize it, and we're hoping that you'll all support us on March 14th at our walkout at 10:00 a.m. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's just coincidental that she happens to be my daughter. And now I will give the school budget presentation. I want to start by saying that we, the Addison Central School District, had our own annual meeting a week ago, last Tuesday on February 27th. And I gave an extensive budget presentation that night. I really hope that everybody gets in the habit of starting to come to that meeting to hear more details about our school budget and really be able to discuss the school budget in detail like we did tonight with the town budget. We don't have time to do the detailed budget, and it's really great to be able to hear from people in lots of different towns, because as you probably know, we are now merged consolidated school districts. So, it's the Middlebury schools along with Bridport, Cornwall, Shoreham, Waybridge, Salisbury, and Ripton. So, we're one school district with all of our towns, and it's really important that we hear from everybody as we're discussing our school budget to make sure that we're meeting the student needs in all of our towns. So, I'm just going to go through this quickly. This was the first year that we had a consolidated budget, where we actually looked at the budget in full for all of our schools. There are elementary schools in all of those towns, and then a middle school and a high school that the towns all share. And we had the finance committee, which I chaired, spend time with this budget to make sure that we were really comprehensive in our budget. And as you probably know, that we did so in an atmosphere of real uncertainty and also with messages from the state, asking school boards to make sure that they budgeted modestly and that they kept their school budget increases to a minimum. We also did so knowing that we were going to have a reduction in the number of students next year. We're expecting 50 fewer students in our school district next year. As our senior class graduates, it's our largest class, and so we will have 50 fewer students at the high school, and we're anticipating about 30 fewer students at the middle school. So, budgeting in this sort of atmosphere of declining enrollments and also pressure from the state because of state finances, we wanted to make sure that we were being really thoughtful in what we were doing. And so, the finance committee tried to budget with the attitude of long-term sustainability for our school district, as we know that these issues that we had to deal with this year are going to continue over the next several years, at least into the near future. We also wanted to make sure that we enhanced educational equity across all of our schools. As we're coming together as a new school district that's combining the history and budgeting practices and educational practices of seven different school districts, we wanted to make sure that we created a budget that provided as much equity across our schools as possible, so that the students in each of our elementary schools were getting a similar education. We were spending a similar amount of money on them, and that they were all equally, had equal opportunities for preparation for our middle school. And we wanted to make sure that we were fiscally responsible in our budget, so that our budget increases were modest and that we were making sure that we are being responsible to you, the taxpayers. And I'm going to pause really briefly, because I should have started by introducing our superintendent, who's yawning up here because he's heard me say this so many times. But this is Peter Burrows. Can you stand up and wave? He's our superintendent of schools. And there are, I know at least a couple of my school board colleagues are here, but now I'm not seeing any of them. Lorraine, I think, Lorraine? And Mary Gill and Lorraine Morse are here, and Chip Malcolm in the back. Anyone else from Middle, okay. So, Lorraine and Chip and Mary also serve on the ACSD School Board as representatives from Middlebury. So, the budget highlights, we were, despite the fiscal challenges, we were able to create a new global language program for Bridport, Cornwall, Salisbury, and Shoreham. This makes those schools equal to the access to this programming that Middlebury and Ripton and Waybridge already enjoy. So, this was part of our ability to enhance equity. We also created two new school psychologist positions in this budget, because we're seeing an increase in the social emotional needs of our students across our district. So, we wanted to make sure we had two additional psychologist positions. We created another second grade classroom here at Mary Hogan School, because this school is one of the few schools in the district that actually has slightly increasing enrollments here. So, we wanted to make sure that at our lower grades, at kindergarten, first and second grade, we had lower class sizes. So, we added an additional second grade classroom and teacher. And the reductions in personnel, we did make reductions in personnel largely at the high school and the middle school and some of our rural elementary schools. And we targeted that to areas and grades where there was declining enrollment. So, at the high school, we saw a large decrease in enrollment, as well as the middle school. And those are the schools where we had decreases in personnel. And also, we combined a few classes in our rural elementary schools. And then, we created some reserve funds for teacher healthcare costs, educational needs, and facilities maintenance. And I'll talk about that in just a second. But the overall budget is a decrease of 1.3%, down to 36.8 million approximately. That's a decrease of a little over 1%. And that's a decrease in spending per pupil also, of about 1.8%, down to 16,907. That's the average across the district of equalized pupils. Equalized pupils are, pupils are weighted depending on what kind of pupil they are. So, their high school students are weighted more than the elementary school students in the counts, because they're more expensive to educate. Also, English language learners, students who are living in poverty, and special education students. So, our equalized pupils did go up slightly, but that's because of the way that the state was calculating our early education students, our pre-K students. Those students, that will not continue in the future. Those students may, in fact, be taken out of school budgets in the future. So, we're not anticipating that our equalized pupil count will increase. It's actually going to go down quite a bit in the next few years. So, we did create some reserve funds, a healthcare reserve fund. This fund of $200,000, and this is a separate article that you'll see tomorrow on your ballot, is used to offset an anticipated potential increase in healthcare usage for our teachers. They have a new healthcare plan. It's new to the state. It was new to our contract. We're not positive how much the usage is going to be. We have budgeted for 60% because that is what the state anticipates will be used. But there is a possibility that 80% would be used, and so this $200,000 is the difference between 60% usage and 80% usage. And it's basically just to cover our risk in case there's higher usage than anticipated. We also added to our educational reserve fund, and this was part of our fiscal responsibility, wanting to have reserve funds of 3% to 5% just in case that there are educational needs, especially in this era of increasing uncertainty with state and federal funding. And this ties in a lot to the discussion we just had with town reserve funds. And the final reserve fund is we added to our capital reserve fund for precisely some of the reasons that we just discussed with our town budget, to make sure that we have funds available to meet the capital needs of our schools, especially because we have quite a few school buildings across the district. And this fund would be used only at the approval of the school board for specific projects, but this is allowing us to put some money in reserves. And we felt like our select board that we were being fiscally responsible by having reserve funds available if we had unmet needs, or if the library boiler blows, for example. So, most of our budgets in our school, well, we have two different kinds of budgets in our school district now. We have centralized budgets that are shared by all of our schools, and then we have the school-based budget. So, these are the centralized budgets. Overall, the centralized budgets are fairly flat. In fact, our special education budget, which is the largest centralized budget, is basically level funded. And that budget is based on the needs of our students. They are budgeted specifically on student needs and knowing how many students we have, what kind of special needs they have. And most of those needs are federally required needs, so we have to budget for the needs of our special education students. And we're happy that they are actually pretty level funded in a year that many other, in an era when many times that is going up. Our transportation funding went up a little bit based on we had to add a bus route, because we're actually getting new students from Hancock and Rochester, because they no longer have a high school option. So, we actually are having about 18 to 20 students from that area, so we needed to provide a bus for them. Administration is mostly flat, technology and most of, all these are mostly flat. We created a new centralized curriculum budget. That's the bottom budget. And that's because we're moving to an international baccalaureate curriculum, which requires pretty significant curricular planning at the central level to make sure that we have the same curriculum across our schools. So, this is a new budget, but it's a reallocation of funds from our professional development budget. It's not new money overall. So, that's basically, and we have a continued contingency, federal state funding went down. So, we still have our collaborative funding programs with the Hannaford Career Center and the Universal Pre-K. There's a slight decrease in the number of students from the Hannaford Career Center and a slight increase in our pre-K students. So, that's actually good news. Maybe we'll have more students in the future, because we have more young kids in town. So, the school-based budgets have, the good news here, and you can't see it that well, and we went into much longer discussion last week about this, but the good news is that these budgets actually are getting more equitable. For those of you who follow this closely, there used to be a much broader difference between the funding per pupil in Waybridge versus Middlebury. Those were the two outliers. And those budgets, as you can see, are getting much closer together. So, Waybridge is about 13,700, and Middlebury is, Mary Hogan is about 11,500, which is a much closer, and this is really what we were trying to do to enhance equity, to put more funding in the places where we needed it, like second grade at Mary Hogan, or school psychologists, and to reduce budgets in areas where we're seeing declining enrollments and fewer student needs. So, this slide just is showing that. But I know out of context, it's hard to see, but I guess you'll have to take my word for it right now. And also, we do have, you didn't get them all tonight, but we do have these large budget books, which are also on the school website if you want more details. And I'm also happy to talk at length to anybody who wants to talk to me after the meeting. We did look at our ratios to licensed staff and teachers to determine, again, for equity purposes, but also for meeting student need purposes, to make sure that our FTE ratios were similar. And again, like the school budgets, these ratios are getting closer together in that we added a classroom here at Mary Hogan, and we reduced some classroom teachers at other places where we are seeing declining enrollments. So, these ratios are also getting closer together. The first is licensed teachers and staff, so that would also include guidance counselors and nurses and non-classroom licensed teachers. And the second is classroom teachers. So, it sort of gives you an idea of class sizes per school. And again, these are getting more equitable as we're able to budget across our entire district. This is hard to see, but basically, this is the breakdown of our types of expenditure categories. And the good news is that about 85% of our budget is spent on direct student instruction and services. So, that would include classroom instruction, special education, Hannaford Career Center and the pre-K program, but also things like teacher professional development and things that are directly, and the curriculum things that are directly related to education of our students. And then, transportation facilities and administration is about 15% of our budget. And that actually, we spend a higher percent on direct instruction than the national average. So, we're really trying to put our funds into the classroom to teach our students and to make our teachers prepared for classroom instruction. So, tax rate. So, the tax rate calculation for school budgets is much more complex than the tax rate calculation for our town budgets. We take our local education spending, which is the net spending of our expenditures, less our revenue, which is, and then divide that by our equalized pupils, to get our education spending per pupil. That's the $16,900 that I told you. And then, that is divided by the property rate, property tax yield, which is a number set by the set by the state, and that will get the equalized district homestead tax rate. And that is reduced by eight cents this year because for those of you who followed school finance over the last few years, you remember, we are getting an incentive reduction because we merged schools, we consolidated our district. We're in the second year of that, so we're at eight cents in our reduction. Last year we were at ten, next year we'll be at six, so every year it goes down two cents. So we're at the eight cent spot. So that decreases it to an estimate, excuse me, estimated homestead tax rate of one dollar and sixty-three cents or sixty-four cents. This is a four point three cents increase over last year, even though our budget is declining, has declined. So goes our state education funding. This is an estimate, estimate right now, based on current law, based on what we know. One of the, the big things about school finance in Vermont is there are so many unknown factors. By the time we have to present a budget to you, we do not have all the data. We can only give you what, what we know right now. So this is what we are estimating at this point. The only thing I can tell you, the only thing I can guarantee you is that this will change. So there are proposals in front of the legislature right now that may change this. Also, the, the, the property tax yield, which right now is about ninety-eight hundred in this formula, that will actually probably go down, and that will actually mean, it will actually go, actually go up, right? Actually, it will go up. It will probably go up, which means that the tax rate will probably go down. It's going to actually get better. Because, and one of the reasons is because like us, school districts across the state have actually done a very good job of budgeting modestly and preparing for declining enrollments. That they were anticipating, I think, an increase of about six percent in school budgets, and it's actually been more around one percent across the state with budgets coming into the state. So this, that, we're going to actually see a, probably an improvement in the tax rate in terms of a lowering of the tax rate, but we don't know yet. So this is all we can tell you right now. So, however, our tax rates are all adjusted by our common level of appraisal, and this is an attempt by our school form, finance system to make sure that every town's tax rate is actually yielding about the same amount so that, that towns aren't messing around, our school districts aren't messing around with their tax rate based on, or messing around with their property values to either lower their tax rate or, or based on their property values. The problem in Middlebury is that our property values are probably under, undervalued based on comparisons to other towns. Our CLA, our common level of appraisal, is about eighty-five percent, which means we, our tax rate will be divided by the common level of appraisal, so our actual tax rate will be about 1.93, which is, which is a lot higher because of our common level appraisal. But you'll recall, our select board mentioned that we are getting a repraisal, reappraisal because this has been a consistent issue over the last few years. And so for our next year's school budget, we're hoping that this problem will be rectified or at least ameliorated in a little, a little bit, so it won't have such a dramatic effect on our tax rate. You can see Cornwall's is about 100% and therefore their tax rate is exactly at 1.63, which is what the estimated is. So hopefully that will go away next year, but right, this year it's not so good for Middlebury. So we're going to continue to work on the school budget and work on sustainable fiscal responsibility and equity. And so this is sort of some of the work that's going to continue as we move forward with our consolidated budget. And that's all I have. I'm happy to take questions. It was a sort of quick presentation because we did a much longer one, which you can find on MCTV. It was thrilling, right? So you can watch it if you're, if you're really excited by this or if you're having a trouble sleeping. But I'm happy to take questions right now if anybody has any, or I'm happy to stay after and talk to you about it. Yeah.
Just, just a very quick question, and perhaps you and Brian and Kathleen can put your heads together here. If, if my tax bill as a taxpayer in Middlebury totals 100%, about what percent of that is municipal tax and about what percent of that is our combined school taxes?
That's an excellent question. I would have to, do you know that?
Just off the top of my head, it's about 30% town, 70% school.
There you go.
Steve?
Hi Ruth. Just curious to know, in your, in the schools, schools capital planning for the various buildings around the district noted with interest in recent weeks, the bond vote, I think it's a bond vote that's happening up in the Virgens District, which has a really important energy, solar and energy conservation component. They're passing a bond, but there's no addition to the tax rate because of the money they anticipate saving through the project on their electricity bills and other things. So I'm curious to know whether the, our school district has looked into that or is planning to do a similar analysis as part of its work. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I think that there's a proposal that's, do you want to speak to this, Peter? Do you know for sure? Yes, it has, and our facilities director has worked with a number of groups who've come forward with proposals, and I think there's one that's about Mary Hogan that's being discussed right now.
Have to go to the mic, Peter, sorry. Right here.
Good evening. So we, we don't have a current proposal that we're engaged in now. Part of what we're waiting on is our master planning. So the board is going about a master planning process over the next eight, nine months, going through all of our communities, taking the assessment we received. We did a full audit of all our facilities last year. And so after gathering all that data, we're looking and trying to determine what makes the most sense. In terms of what's happening in Bristol and their project, I, I think, over gens, okay? I thought you were talking about the bond in Bristol.
It's a different project.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the high school bond. So you're talking about the, just the renewable energy work that they're doing.
There's a cap, a general
Okay.
Building capital improvement bond that they're voting on across a bunch of their schools. But an important component of it relates to energy and solar and efficiency improvements in their buildings, in addition to some other work they're doing on the building. So it's, it's all about that.
So, so the, the, the ACSD board really wants to do a thorough, comprehensive approach rather than jumping into a couple isolated projects. So I think that's kind of where things are headed once this master plan is completed, which is slated for November of this year. I think part of that is going to have both immediate and long-term goals in terms of this and other facilities needs for the district.
I guess embedded in my question is a request that you look closely at those same kinds of energy uses and improvements across the buildings that would relate to energy improvements, which can reduce the costs over time and also be good for the environment.
Yeah, and a number of our schools already do have solar and one of them has wind, actually. So there already, there's already a sort of movement in ACSD to do this. And I think what Peter was saying is that the school board is looking long-term at our facilities, our grade structure, our entire sort of how we do things now that we are one school district with a lot of different sites and buildings.
Without getting too deep into the weeds in this, can you give us an idea of how this common level of appraisal, or common level appraisal, whatever it is, the CLA, is determined since obviously you don't have the same properties appraised in all of the different towns?
Right. I think it's determined by the state, by the state Department of Revenue, I believe, that looks at all of the, the property across the state and tries to, tries to figure out if, if we're, if we're, we have a tax rate in Middlebury and a tax rate in Winuski, if their property values are the same, if their tax rate is the same, will they be raising the same amount for that, for, with that tax rate based on their property value? So it's not a number that we determine, it's a number determined by the state. Yeah, hi John. Oh, John, you want to speak to it? Okay.
John?
Governor, thank you. The common level of appraisal is computed by the Division of Housing, blah, 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 something, Property and Housing Evaluation. What it does is it looks at the sales in each town and compares what those properties sold for to what they're listed for. So if they're listed for the same price as they sold, then you have a perfect CLA, okay? Like I believe it was Cornwall.
Right.
Okay? In, in the case of Middlebury, what it's saying is that the listed value of residential real estate is considerably lower than the prices it's selling for. I think that means eighty, it's eighty-four dollars on the grand list and the selling prices in the last year have been about 100, okay? And you can always ask yourself whether what your property is listed for on the grand list is something that you'd be willing to sell it for. I imagine for most of us, it's not. And that's why we have a CLA because we now have essentially a uniform tax system for schools across the state. And if we didn't have that, people would be paying unfair amounts. It's nothing new, though. We've had that CLA for 40 years.
No, that, that helps a lot. And how, over how long a period is this average? Because in some of the smaller towns, there are probably relatively few property sales in any given year.
I, I don't know the answer to that, Frank. I used to know it, but I don't know it.
First thought. Thank you, John.
They are updated annually, so we do get those each year. They change each year.
All right.
Other questions for Ruth on the Addison Central School District budget that you'll be considering tomorrow? And there are four articles, right, Ruth? It's not just the budget.
Yes. There's the budget and then there are those three reserve funds, the Teacher Healthcare Cost Reserve Fund or Health Reserve Fund, the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund and the Education Reserve Fund, and they're all separate articles plus the budget. And, yeah.
Good job on the equity.
Thank you. We worked hard on that. So if there are no more questions, I'm happy to stay and talk to any of you. And I just wanted to say, I think this is my fifth Middlebury Town Meeting that I've given a, a budget presentation for our school through a period of huge transition in our school operations, our school governance and our school financing. And I've tried really hard to make sure that the citizens of Middlebury understand our school budgets. I have decided not to run for my seat on the school, so, school board, so this will be my last town meeting, giving you the school budget presentation. And I just wanted to thank all of you for all of your excellent questions over the years. My favorite thing to do is to stand up in front of all of you and answer your questions and be accountable to the voters of Middlebury. It has been such an honor to serve you, and I hope to find another way to do so in the near future. So thank you so much.
Ruth will be asking some tough questions next year, so. But thank you so much for all your long service. Natalie?
I want to do one more thing before we close.
Yes, ma'am.
As somebody who has not learned how to cozy up to her tablet or her computer, I would love in the future to have a printed version of all the reports and the budget as you've done in the past. I cannot print it out on my computer, from my computer. So if there's some way in the future to have the printed one for those of us who have grown up for 70 years cozying up to printed works and writing things in the margins and so forth, please.
Brian?
Mrs. Peters. Thank you for bringing that up. Everybody should know that all, we print them out on request and we usually have a few, but it, one of the things that came up of several town meetings ago was looking to save funds on that. But if you would like it printed versus in the digital format, we will absolutely print it for you. Just come by the town offices and
Put it on that little notice that went around.
Okay.
In, in big print. If you want a copy, please request it at this telephone number or something.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Actually, it is, Natalie. Yeah. Just copies of the town report and budget are available on the website or upon request with a telephone number.
Oh dear, sorry. It's printed too, and I didn't see it.
That's okay.
Don't get old.
Well, actually, I aspire to. I don't know about everybody else. Any other business to come before the end mark?
Mark Mooney?
One, one more item, an eight hundred and some odd thousand dollar item, and that's the fire truck. I learned that the department and board came together and, around the need for a new ladder truck, which is now in place here in Middlebury, state of the art. And it was my thought that when the board was going to look at the funding for this, they would be going to the college, which they did. And I was confident, since on the last ladder truck they paid for nearly all of it, that this time they would make a significant contribution. I was to learn that's not the case. They have not, they're not going to make any contribution for a piece of equipment that is vital to them as it is to the town of Middlebury and the greater area. So my appeal to the board was that I hope they would get them to reconsider this. My sense is that is not the attitude of the present administration at the college about contributing finances for needs that both of us could, will make use of. Now, in recent times, is my opinion that the college have been proactive in supporting municipal efforts here with the town offices, the bridge and the municipal, or the gymnasium. However, not to contribute to an eight hundred thousand dollar item that is vital to their safety as it is to the Middlebury Village, I think is not responsible. So I appeal to the board one more time to ask again, and any of you who feel the same way, to make it known, if you know anyone at the college in a position of decision-making, to ask them to reconsider that also. Thank you.
Brian?
Just to provide a little background on this, Mark is correct in that previously the college did contribute significantly to the prior ladder truck. When we purchased this ladder truck, we had sufficient funds in our fire department fund balance to purchase the ladder truck. We did go to the college and, and have discussions with the college about the college contributing to the ladder truck. The college had just, just, President Patton had just taken over as the president of the college and came in with a very significant budget deficit. The college is, they were in the process of struggling through trying to, to rebalance their budget. At the same time, they're continuing to contribute 650,000, I believe, to the Cross Street Bridge each year and making other payments to, to the town. In, in its total, it's well over a million dollars that they're contributing to the We looked at the gravity of the need for the town, and we projected out through the next purchases that would be required for the fire department and using the same fire department fund and the annual growth in the fund. I don't know, is Chief Shaw here still? So Chief Shaw could have helped me be a little more specific, but we looked at tanker trucks and really the entire equipment replacement cycle. And the need at this time is not obvious to the town because our fund is actually working very well. And so, you know, frankly, we feel, we felt And so, you know, frankly, we feel, we felt that the college asked if they could be given some time, that they are not saying they won't continue to contribute, in fact, we have a very good relationship with our college here in town. And if we had had a need, a definite need, where it was going to put us into a financial issue as far as the fire department fund, I think we might have been met a little differently. But when our own town funds were fully capable of funding the ladder truck and not depleting it to the point that we could not continue to do our scheduled replacements, the college asked for a pass this time. And, you know, that's kind of where we were at, Mark, on that.
Anything else to come before the annual meeting? Steve?
One last time, thank you, everybody. Steve Meyer. I just want to make a quick announcement that I would welcome others in the town to engage in a community process that I've been involved with, with a number of your friends and neighbors, called the Greater Middlebury Climate Economy Initiative. And I just read that we're, our vision and statement includes that we're working together to strengthen Middlebury's economic, environmental and social health and resilience so that our region will achieve deep carbon reduction while also supporting a thriving and inclusive ecosystem of businesses and institutions. We have four task forces that are actively meeting now, one of which is on energy efficiency and solar projects in, in neighborhood communities, and we're actively searching for an interested neighborhood in Middlebury, 20, 40, 50 households. If you think your neighborhood might be interested in really rallying around a project that would include a comprehensive list of energy-related projects in your homes, from efficiency and weatherization projects to possibly solar projects, to perhaps switching to an electric or hybrid car, and there are others, please see me afterward. I'll also have flyers at the town office tomorrow during the voter time, and we'd love to have you get involved. Thanks.
And our clerk has an announcement as well.
Well, I just wanted to thank the school district and particularly Mary Hogan School for hosting us. And then I wanted to put out a plea to any of you who are able-bodied and willing, that they're going to want their space back pretty early in the morning. And so if it's convenient for you to pick up your wooden chair, take it towards that door to the side and lean it against the wall, that would be great. If you're near a metal chair, it could go against that wall there, or the ones in the back could go against the back wall, and it would be a big help to our maintenance custodial person who may be on his own tomorrow, kind of getting our stuff out of here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
I just want to give a special shout out to anybody who's new to Middlebury or new to town meeting for coming out tonight and hanging in here for our meeting. And I also wanted to say that the survey last year said, never get rid of Jim as our moderator. So I just wanted, I just wanted to give him a special thank you, too, for always doing a fantastic job moderating our town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. But there will come a day. Anything else to come before the meeting? Yes. Peg Martin?
It was your term pickup. This year, Green Up Day will be 50 years old. 1968, and I was here with my kids to help picking up. It's the first Saturday in May. It will be May 5th this year, and it seems to me that this is a very, very fine year for us to go really full bore. We have a very constant group of people who work on Green Up Day. We could use more. We could use neighborhood organizations in addition to the folks. We've got good old Captain Green Up over there, who goes out with a middle school, and boy, they do the whole parking area like you wouldn't believe. Any help we have had in the past, a sort of a pickup cookout at Otter Creek, that is no, that isn't working anymore, that isn't happening anymore, but if there's any organization that would be willing to take on such a thing, that would be a wonderful project. And Green Up Day is not only, I think, unique in the nation, it is absolute community proof of many hands make light work. And the last thing I will say is please pray for sunshine on the 5th of May.
We can't blend religion and politics. I'm sorry. Any, any other announcements or any other, oh, Laura?
I just wanted to explain that. There is an event that happens on Green Up Day in the afternoon. The Food Co-op gives a wonderful festival. So there's an environmental festival, and there are a lot of environmental groups that'll be there for that. And then in the morning, there's the annual bike swap. And so there is a lot happening that day that celebrates and brings us together. So we hope you'll participate in that and feel rewarded.
Any other business to come before the meeting? If not, somebody, John Tenny moved that we adjourn, seconded by Al Perry. All in favor of adjourning the annual meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the meeting stands adjourned.